Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, June 2, 2020, at exactly 6:00 PM. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Here.
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
Here.
Mayor Canning.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you very much. As a reminder, we are conducting this evening's meeting under the allowances offered to us by the State of California under the COVID-19 conditions. The meeting is being live telecast on YouTube Live and Channel 28, and we will be receiving and are able to receive comments on agendized items via email. And City Clerk, if you can recite slowly that email for the friends and family at home, and we know there is a vast studio audience.
Yes.
Or home audience, excuse me.
The email address for public comments is publiccomment@ci.calistoga.ca.us. Again, that's public comment, P-U-B-L-I-C-C-O-M-M-E-N-T, at ci.calistoga.ca.us.
Thank you. So, we're going to move into Pledge of Allegiance, but prior to doing so, at the conclusion of the pledge, we're going to take a moment, and I'd just like to share a few remarks. Our nation once again finds itself at another point of frustration, disbelief, rage, and concern. While still being mired in the impacts of COVID-19, we are now contending with another challenge to the character and fabric of our country as a result of racism. While Calistoga may be isolated and insulated from some of the impacts caused by rioting throughout the country, we are certainly not immune to the effects of inequality, injustice, or discrimination. As Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." We are a diverse and vibrant community that prides itself in shared cultures. With that said, there are elements within our own city that need to be addressed to ensure the health, safety, and economic equality of our most vulnerable residents. Let us take this time to reflect upon what we have done in the past, what we're doing now, and what we can do in the future to establish a better place to live and work for all, regardless of their race, religion, gender, orientation, or political affiliation. Thank you, and please stand if you're able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment, please. Thank you. I will entertain a motion on this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. We have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. City Managers Report. City Manager Kern with a fresh, new, and legally obtained haircut.
Correct. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Mike Kern, City Manager. Couple of things real quickly. The county just issued a NICSIL a few minutes ago declaring a state of emergency for the south part of the county, so they're on curfew through Thursday from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. City of American Canyon is also under curfew. The Fire Department received their new Type III fire engine last week, and it will go into service this week, and will be bringing a resolution of accepting the donation to you on the 16th. The community pool opened yesterday, to a very successful start, and we're doing water aerobics and lap swim. It is by reservation only, and everything is booking up really fast. So, if you have a desire to go swimming, please do so. And then, some really, really good news that Derek got this afternoon. A while back, we had put in Proposition 1 grant for three projects, the Pioneer Bridge and fish barrier removal, the local match for the restoration of the Riverside ponds as part of the cease and desist order, and what we call the Con Creek Waterline Replacement. We've been awarded $2.028 million.
Wow, well done, Derek.
Yeah, wow. Outstanding.
Makes most of those projects 100% grant-funded. So, very, very great.
That's fantastic. Well done.
Thank you.
Other people's money, right?
Absolutely.
Ours at the end of the day. Regarding the pool being reopened, first, I want to say thank you to the community for their patience in working with us through this. We are adhering to all of the state and county regulations relative to that. Thank you to the staff for being flexible and available and implementing those new regulations quickly. And to the many folks who have texted and emailed me about the need to expand classes and allow more people in them, first, I will say, hey, how lucky are we to have a pool that's open at all? Please be flexible. The number of people allowed in each class is driven by a state regulation, not by us. And for those who very generously offered to pay for additional classes, it's not just a money thing, it's a staffing availability and size thing in terms of how many people we can allow in. So, enjoy what you have, make the most of what you have, and we will try our best while adhering to state standards to expand that. But at this point, I would say, enjoy what we are currently allowed to offer. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to oral communication. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes maximum so that all speakers have the opportunity to address the City Council. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to address the council on a consent calendar item or a non-agendized item? All right, is there anyone in the public at home that has?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. I will close public comment, and I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless a modification is requested.
I'd like to pull number three, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'll move items one and two.
All right. So, I will... You corrected me on this last time, Kendall. Wait, let me get it. So, can I have a motion on the consent calendar as in whole in a second? Can I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Okay. I make a motion that we...
On the consent calendar.
On the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion now?
Yes.
I'd like to discuss item number three.
Well done, Mr. Mayor.
I'm learning. After doing it a different way for so many years.
Thank you. On item number three, this one relates to the agreement with the Up Valley Family Center, which I fully support sending funds towards the family center. They do great work, and we appreciate that. However, I do have a concern about making that agreement a three-year term rather than a one-year term. These are uncertain times, and I would be reluctant to commit ourselves at this uncertain time for three years. A year from now, if the renewal comes, if the contract comes back up for renewal and conditions are favorable, or at least as good as they are now, we'll be glad, and I will be glad to approve it again. But we see that conditions can change, and the flexibility, I think, is important at this time. So, I would be glad to approve it for a year and glad to entertain it again next year. But the three-year term, I think, would be a concern locking us in at a time when there is such uncertainty.
Thank you very much. City Manager Kern, can you kind of tell us the logistics and history of a three-year versus a suggested one-year?
It has been year-to-year previously, I believe, correct? And this was more out of some surety and, you know, administrative efficiency, not having to bring it back every year. So, if it's the council's direction to flip it back to a one-year, that's easily done. And Jenny is here, if you have any questions of her.
Sure. Jenny, if you don't mind, if you could share with us your name, position, and the organization you represent.
I'll take this for a moment.
You're allowed.
I'm Jenny O'Conne, Executive Director of the Up Valley Family Centers. We have been partnering with the city for, as long as I've been with the organization, over six years, but well longer than that, to provide services for its residents. And as the city manager indicated, that it's both to prevent the necessary coming back and requesting and adjusting. For us, it's helpful to have the certainty because, as a nonprofit, we raise our full budget every year, and this allows us to know that we can be here for the residents of Calistoga over the, you know, coming years. And so, those were reasons for why we made the request.
So, will this have an operational effect on your ability to provide services to the community, not going through years, or?
It will not.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions?
What was the budget for the last couple of years?
Previously, it was $60,000 a year for all three services. They've requested a $30,000 increase, $20,000 for seniors, and $10,000 for community education and engagement.
And this was projected in our budget discussions to this point, which TBD on approval?
Correct.
Councilmember Kraus.
I did not recall in our discussions of the budget a couple of weeks back that this was going to be a three-year contract, and I think I always remembered that it was one-year contract. So, when I gave my approval, I guess you'd say, to increasing this to $90,000, my thought was, it's one year. And... But for three years, I agree with Don. It would be nice, you know, if I was running a nonprofit, it would be nice to have the certainty of having the income. But I'm running a city that does not have certainty on the income. And for that reason, I support Don's suggestion that we do just a one-year contract, and then next year, if we're in a better position, we can renew that, and maybe even at that time, go two years. But right now, with the uncertainty of our financial future, I prefer the one-year.
All right. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Just to be clear, so will be $90,000 for the three years or each year?
Each year.
Each year.
Each year.
Okay.
Anyone else in the council? Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? Any comments from home?
Not at this time.
All right. I'm not seeing a significant objection to the ability to provide services or operate by going back to a one-year. I would be supportive of that. So, with that said, I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar with a modification to item number three. That'd be a one-year deal.
I second that.
I'm entertaining it. You can make it.
Okay. I move that we accept this contract as written, with the exception that we change the term from three to one year.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar with a modification to item number three. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moves onward. How'd I do there, Kendall?
Very good.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Originally agendized, we had two public hearings. Item number four, this item will be continued. It was the consideration of the draft fiscal year '20 and '21 budget. We have, based on our budget discussion and study session last week, we have allotted more time for staff to come back to the council with some further work and amendments to that budget. So, I believe this is being moved to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be June 16th. Correct, City Manager Kern? Thank you very much. Anyone have any discussions or concerns about that? All right. Item number five, consideration of a waiver from undergrounding existing overhead utilities and approving the Butler parcel map pursuant to Calistoga Municipal Code 16.02.080B. The property is located at 1207 Silver Street. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution, adopt the resolution as presented. There will be a staff report with attachments. Are there any declarations or recusals for this particular item?
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself from item number five because of proximity to my property.
Thank you very much. We'll give you a moment to either stay, vacate, take a walk around the block. Don't go too far. Any other declarations or recusals? All right. Thank you, Don. Let the record reflect. Councilmember Williams has left the room based on a proximity conflict. Thank you. All right. Zach, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zach Tussinger, Planning and Building Director. As noted, we have before you tonight a parcel map and request for an underground utilities waiver. Little bit of background here, this is a 120-foot by 120-foot square parcel as currently exists. It's a double lot at the corner of Silver and Myrtle. This is in the R1 zoning district. I believe late last year, the Planning Commission approved a variance for the corner lot width for a resulting new lot. Generally, corner lots under our code are required to have 70 feet in width in order to split these two parts, this one parcel into two lots. Both lots, including the corner lot, would just have 60 feet in width. Variance was approved by that for the Planning Commission. They did come back, the applicant, to the Planning Commission with a tentative parcel map just recently. Attached to that were standard conditions. This is the parcel map. The yellow and orange together there at the corner of Myrtle and Silver is the square lot as it exists today. Separately, the yellow and orange would be two lots. The orange one, the vacant, potentially develop a lot on the corner of Myrtle and Silver. So, one of the issues here is that the municipal code requires undergrounding of utilities when a new lot is created, unless a waiver is granted by City Council. There's two sets of factors to consider when granting a utility waiver. One's the unique circumstances, the design, and the impracticality of the undergrounding. This is a screenshot from Google of the corner as it looks today. There are a lot of above-ground wires in that neighborhood. In fact, this parcel in particular has almost 200 feet of frontage that has utilities, including telephone and electrical wires on it. If it was required to be undergrounded, the main pole there on the corner would probably go away. All of the cables and lines on the frontage of both Myrtle and Silver Street would have to be undergrounded. Potentially, how it's configured, the undergrounding would have to extend significantly beyond the actual parcel's frontage to the nearest existing poles. In response to a question I got today, I spoke with our Public Works Director, Derek Rayner, and he let me know that kind of the rule of thumb for PG&E undergrounding is about $1,000 a foot for undergrounding. So, we're looking at some potential costs for undergrounding for this one residential parcel. I would note that in the past, this one parcel actually was two separate parcels in the past, but at some point, they were merged together. The other set of considerations for a waiver is the length of the required undergrounding. At least on the parcel's frontage, it's less than 200 feet. Whether it's likely that the undergrounding will occur on the adjacent properties in the next 10 years, I think it's probably safe to say it's pretty unlikely on the developed parcels nearby. And whether there's a visual burden that's significant related to the lines. There's definitely a lot of lines out there. They are pretty obscured by trees in some of the areas. They're not blocking views of the palisades or anything like that, but there's a lot of lines there. No question about that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here. She is, I have to thank her for working with us on this process. It's an arduous process to create a lot and go back to the Planning Commission and the City Council, and even with COVID and everything, she's hung in there. So, I have to commend her for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Zach. Councilmembers, any questions of staff?
Yes, before the public hearing, I guess I'd like to hear from the public, but then I'll have several questions.
All right. Other councilmembers, any questions?
Do we have some precedence of other times that we've given this variance?
We have issued a number of undergrounding waivers in the past. I don't have exact metrics on how many we have issued. I spoke with Councilmember Kraus about this earlier today, and I think he recalled a fair number of exemptions over the years. I think that's fair to say.
Two that I can think of.
Okay. You know, every lot is a little bit different when it comes to this kind of variance in terms of the considerations, but yes, it has been something we have done in the past.
Zach, was there any direction from, or recommendation from Planning Commission relative to this particular element of the project?
So, the Planning Commission, they did not include this in their resolution, other than this is a condition until waived by the City Council. I think it was, it's fair to say that the reaction of the Planning Commission was in favor of this waiver coming in front of the City Council.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public in the chambers first wishing to address the matter? The applicant is welcome to, should you so choose, but not required to. Okay. Any messages from home?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kraus, you had some further questions?
Yes. In the past, I have voted on two occasions to waive the undergrounding requirement, most notably up on Mora Road. And the agreement that was made, as I recall, is that when the rest of the properties along the line were ready to underground, that they would have to underground the street portion. But the portion from the street into the two new subdivisions all had to be underground. And to me, it's a public safety issue. I think we all know that we've had some problems with wind-blown debris getting into the tree, or getting into the lines, and then you get a fire or whatever. So, I feel that undergrounding is the way to go wherever you can. We have made other people on that very street underground. The, I think it's the McPhails, that subdivision, created a couple of lots along there, along Myrtle. As I recall, the Ingalls residence has to underground, and they're not corner lots. You know, I understand that there's a lot of extra footage in there. So, I did some research. I know it's expensive. There are two things that we could consider, and that is waiving the requirement and allowing the subdivision to go ahead and proceed, or we could not waive the requirement, and then the property isn't quite worth as much as it's up for sale right now. I understand that in 2015, the property sold for $750,000. With the lot split, the lot alone is up for sale for $588,000, and the duplex for $1,075,000. That's doubling the money on this piece of property in five years.
I don't know that we're allowed to consider that when
Okay.
seeking a waiver, but I'll take input.
So, I don't have a problem with people making money, but we've already granted one variance on the width, and now we're looking at another variance. So, we either, in my estimation, we either say no to the variance for the undergrounding, or we direct staff to develop an in-lu fee that we would charge based on lineal feet or something like that. And that way, anybody else who comes in would have the opportunity to either underground or pay an in-lu fee, such as they do for parking right now. So, that's my input on the issue.
Zach, is there anything in the municipal code that allow, on this subject, that allows for an in-lu?
I'm not aware of an in-lu fee possibility for this in the municipal code. It's definitely something theoretically we could develop. I don't know what the timing of developing an in-lu fee, or even how that would potentially relate to this specific application, but it is something we could definitely look into quite easily, I would imagine, for definitely for future applications.
City Manager Kern, there's an open mic there. Since you have a broader breadth of experience, your knowledge and experience in this subject matter?
So, it's challenging to try and pick landing points where you start and where you stop. One of the things that, in the past, we've considered is, would the undergrounding result in, you know, a significant visual improvement in the area? And what would probably necessarily have to happen is that new poles would have to be set at the corners of the property and possibly across the street. So, you're not really eliminating any poles, but you are eliminating the overhead improvements.
On that particular, over that particular parcel?
Around that, the two frontages.
Zach, could you go back to the photo, please, while Mike's talking, sir?
Absolutely.
You know, one of the things that we've talked about in the past is formation of underground utility district. That requires, you know, identification of a corridor that we want to underground. We have about $850,000 in credits with PG&E. That gets you maybe three-quarters of a mile. So, what we would want to look at is where would we get the best return on that kind of an investment? It also puts a burden on the residential or the commercial properties because they would be responsible to convert their overhead service to underground service. That can run anywhere from, you know, $20,000 to $50,000, depending on the size of the service. For this application or this location, the the return on investment is going to be minimal from a visual clutter removal because you're still going to have the overhead, you know, all around it. So, I think that probably is one of the biggest drivers on finding that you could make in support of the waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for Mike. Mike?
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
I don't see any sidewalks there on that. Are there sidewalks there that I?
Not on that corner.
So, are they, if they subdivide, are they going to have to put in sidewalks?
So, they would be conditioned to put in those frontage improvements at the time the building permit was pulled for a two-parcel parcel map. We can't condition them to install frontage improvements.
I can elaborate on that. The conditions that will go with the parcel map do require all the standard of frontage improvements when that parcel is developed.
So, in addition to sidewalks, what else would be considered frontage improvements?
In addition to sidewalks, it's primarily curb and gutter repairs, apron for the driveway, assuming a driveway is installed. There's probably a couple other miscellaneous things I'm forgetting, but...
Probably the most important thing would be an ADA ramp at the corner.
Yep.
And do we have an estimate of cost for the undergrounding?
Back of napkin, it's about $300,000.
Okay. Any other councilmembers?
What about the properties nearby? Are they all undergrounded, or do they have to do changes in their properties, though?
So, generally speaking, the properties in that area are not undergrounded. There are a couple newer, smaller subdivisions, three, four lots farther down Myrtle, that when they were built, they, there hadn't been homes on the property, and there was no electrical when they were built, they, there hadn't been homes on the property, and there was no electrical, and so it was go, they went ahead and undergrounded all the lines. Councilmember Kraus mentioned a couple of those. Depending on how the undergrounding was configured, if, if we did require the undergrounding for this, it could potentially require some undergrounding wires in front of additional homes. It just sort of depends on how it was ultimately configured.
Any, have you received any further public comment, Kendala, on this item?
Not on this item.
Okay, thank you. The applicant, if you'd like to, you're not required to, but you're welcome to address any of the questions raised.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please share with us your name, and I assume that's your address.
Yeah, my name is Teresa Butler, and my address is 1207 Silver.
If you could just get closer to the mic, sorry, because at home, they have to hear us.
Sorry.
You're okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
No, I'm small. Is that better? Okay. I just want to address something that, because you talked about the cost, number one, you can't imagine how much money I put into that property, what that lot was like, and that home was like when I purchased it. I'm also a native of the Napa Valley. My parents were public school teachers here. I am fourth generation. I have seen the increase in this valley. Why shouldn't I be able to make an increase? And it would not be doubled because of how much money I put into that property. It was, oh, it was a lot of money, and if you want to look at it, I'll show it to you. I'm kind of insulted by that. We've seen, my parents bought their house for less than $10,000 in St. Helena, and was lucky enough that it cared when they, now that they're elderly, it cares for them. You know, we've seen everybody in the Napa Valley make ridiculous amounts of money, and I think that's kind of unjust to call that as the issue. I've complied with everything. My late husband was the veterinarian here. We provided care, free care for all animals that couldn't be cared for for decades. And the police officer's dog, we cared for him, we cared for Zach. We, I've done nothing but take care of this community, and I'm just a little insulted by that comment. I'm sorry that I'm insulting Mr. Kraus. So anyway, in saying this, it's in keeping with what was originally there. It was two lots. I'm, all I'm asking is to go back to two lots. And I do have buyers on both lots, to be honest, and they know that, you know, we're not sure exactly how this will be. I've been very upfront. But this is Calistoga, and all of a sudden to make a big change of, okay, all of a sudden, we're going underground, and when nobody else has had to do that. And the size of the lot also is in keeping with every other size lot. It's either larger or the same as every other lot in that entire, I think it's five blocks? Four blocks, maybe?
Okay.
So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. With that said, I'll entertain a motion or further discussion from the council on this. As I can recall, in the 10 years I've been in the council, I don't think there is a waiver that we did not grant relative to undergrounding. But if somebody did the research, you might be able to prove me wrong. But in looking at the, I'm quite familiar with this neighborhood. I live on Myrtle Street, but far enough away that I don't have a proximity issue. I, I think it would be, for the, the reasons listed that we're allowed to make the waiver, I, I think that this property qualifies for that.
I think we made some exceptions with, I think it was the Deckards, Warren Deckard's property. I think there was.
We allowed the waiver, but he had to go back.
Well, he had to do some undergrounding, but then we allowed some overhead, my recollection. I mean, to Gary's point, in fairness, you know, when somebody subdivides a lot, there's, there obviously, there's a financial gain, and in return for that financial gain, the city makes a request for improvements that benefit the neighborhood and the city, which is why they have to put in sidewalks, curb and gutter, ADA, you know, remove power lines, stuff like that. So, I mean, that's sort of the exchange. That's why we're here. But I completely understand that it's incredibly expensive, you know, to, to do that. And we are getting the benefit of sidewalks, curb and gutter, ADA ramp in the future. We're not going to get that now, but when they build, we will get that benefit.
I, I agree and acknowledge the, when you do subdivide, there is a benefit, and the extraction that the city gets is benefit to public, and in this case, it's curb, sutter, sidewalk.
We also went through this issue with Buddy, if you recall, where I think he was doing a subdivision of property, and, you know, he was going to be required to do all kinds of stuff, and I don't think we granted him any variance. I don't know if you recall that.
That was before me. Was that undergrounding, or that was curb, gutter, sidewalk?
I think it was all the above.
Yeah, it was.
It didn't go over very well.
He wound up running for city council because of it.
Right.
All right. Further questions?
But one question I have, Zach, is so, are you able to, to remove some of the power lines, like on one strip that might border like one side of the property but not the other? Like, do you have to do the whole thing, or is there like a?
Traditionally, it's the whole thing. It's all the frontage.
Yeah.
You know, the trick is, if you just want to drop it on one side, you're probably actually not going to reduce the number of poles. You're just going to reduce some lines in front of it. And as the city manager indicated, depending on how it's configured, it could ultimately lead to more poles.
I'm, I'm fine with granting the.
Is, is PGE able to do some improvements when, you know, to there, or is, and also the cost, the owners, they had to pay for the whole thing, right? Or the city has to spend some money?
So, so none of this should be at any cost to the city as a result of, you know, the lot split? The parcel is conditioned such that if somebody wants to develop on them, on the new resulting parcel, as indicated, they have to build the sidewalk, the curb, gutter, the ADA ramp, and those will be at the cost to the builder at the time, and those things aren't cheap.
And that sidewalk all the way around the parcel, both sides?
Correct.
Okay. I will motion to accept the wa, or allow the waiver on this particular parcel based on the circumstances and the mitigations we're allowed.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Can somebody flag Councilmember Williams?
Mayor Canning, I'm going to have to recuse, accuse myself on items six and seven per proximity issue.
Okay. Let me read them, and then you'll, and I think you, no, you're good?
I moved.
You moved. Welcome back, Don.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number six, under General Government, consideration of a resolution accepting the engineer's report for the Palisades subdivision landscape maintenance assessment district declaring the intention of the city council to levy and collect assessments and setting the date for the public hearing. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Are there any recusals or declarations required on this item?
I have to recuse myself owing to a proximity issue.
And that will apply to both items number six and seven, I believe?
Correct.
At the record show, Councilmember Kraus will be recusing on item six and seven. Enjoy the nice weather outside. Give him a moment to exit, and we will move on. Taking us through this item this evening will be Public Works Director and City Engineer Derek Rayner. Derek, welcome back.
And council members, good evening. Derek Rayner, Public Works Director for Calistoga. The item before you tonight is the, both the Palisades and the Silverado engineers' report, and it's consider, your consideration of the resolution to accept the engineer's report for both subdivisions for their landscape maintenance assessment district and declaring the intention to levy and collect the assessments to maintain that strip of landscaping and set a date for the public hearing. The location of both these subdivisions, they're located just kind of behind La Prima and in between Money and Highway 29, kind of across from where the substation is. To give you a little reference, there's a couple maps, too, that are included in the, in the staff reports. But basically, the, the landscape maintenance agreement, the city crews perform that maintenance of that landscape strip that's adjacent to the highway, as well as the strip, there's a small strip along Money Lane, right at High Rock Court. And that maintenance consists of, you know, weeding, irrigation, trimming of trees, and pruning, and general maintenance of that strip. Our staff costs to maintain that are listed in the report. We've got, you know, basically, it, it costs more to maintain that than the collection of the assessment. So the city does kick in a little bit of money to make that whole and, and pay for that. So anyways, and those, those are listed in the staff report, the values of those. The Palisades has 44 lots. They pay $35 per lot annually. Silverado has 15 lots, and they pay $67 annually as well. And it's prorated based on the amount of landscaping that they have, and it's maintained along their frontage. So there's, there can't be any proposed increases to make up the difference in the costs without getting it on the ballot and to the property owners to meet Prop 218 requirements. So, you know, basically, we're recommending that, or suggesting that we come back to you on July 21st for the public hearing if you so choose to accept the engineer's report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council members, any questions on this item? All right. Anyone in the public chambers wishing to address this item? Anyone at home?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion on item number six as presented.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunstford, a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item number seven, I just have to read it, Derek, it'll be a ditto. Item number seven, consideration of a resolution accepting the engineer's report for the Silverado Place subdivision landscape maintenance assessment district declaring the intention of the city council to levy and collect assessments and setting the date for the public hearing. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Kraus is not present because of a proximity issue on this item as well. Item number seven, Derek, I'm going to assume is a ditto of item number six.
Correct.
And you already shared with us what the per parcel cost is, so I appreciate that. Anyone in the public chambers wishing to address this item? Anyone at home wishing to address this item?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion on item number seven as presented.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunstford, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Derek, well done. Thank you. Welcome back, Councilmember Kraus. All right. Let the record reflect the return of Councilmember Kraus. Item number eight, consideration of a resolution approving a connection and development impact fee deferral loan in the amount of $2 million and authorizing the city manager to execute a 55-year subordinate loan agreement with For the Future Housing Incorporated to assist in the construction of a new 78-unit affordable housing project at 1855 Lincoln Avenue. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Are there any declarations or recusals on this particular item?
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself on this one as well.
Thank you, and this is a proximity issue to a property you own.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you very much. Let the record reflect, Councilmember Williams will be stepping off the dais. All right. Taking us through this item this evening will be, my machine is not cooperating with me. Is this going to be City Manager, not Zach, because I see he's left the room?
I'll take a shot at it.
Thank you. Taking us through this item will be City Manager Kern. City Manager Kern, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mike Kern, City Manager. The item before you this evening is consideration of a $2 million deferral of impact fees and connection fees for the purposes of constructing a 78-unit affordable housing project. If you recall, back in May, we brought forward a couple of options for your consideration for affordable housing projects, this property, and also the property at Earl and Eddie. At the then-time, both of the proposals were seeking some form of financial assistance in the range of at least $2 million, up to $2.5 million. Based on economy of scale and efficiency, staff recommended that if, that we were inclined to make any kind of financial assistance, that we would get more return on our investment by going in on the 78-unit property on Lincoln Avenue. It was about a two-to-one differential. I think the Lincoln Avenue property subsidy or assistance was about $56,000 per unit, whereas the subsidy on Earl and Eddie was around $120,000 per unit, primarily due to the scaling factor. After meeting with For the Future Housing, they had originally proposed two different types of funding requests. One was for $4.5 million, wherein they would be seeking 4% tax credits. However, with the recent financial meltdown in Sacramento, the 4% tax credit program no longer exists. The only tax credit program that is currently available is the 9% tax credit, which tweaks the number of affordable units slightly. The way that we've envisioned that this would transpire is that there would be a deferral of several impact fees and water and wastewater connection fees totaling $2 million. The project would necessarily need to backfill the differential, which is about $350,000, which would be sprinkled throughout the various impact fees and water and wastewater connection fees. The loan would be for a term of 55 years, which is part of the tax credit requirements. The property would be deed restricted and would be affordable, low, very low, and moderate low affordability. At the end of 55 years, or if the property transfers title, there would be a balloon payment of the $2 million back to the city, which would go to the Affordable Housing Fund. The loan would include a 3% simple interest, and in order to make the impact fee funds and the water and wastewater connection fee funds whole, we would recommend that future Measure D, TOT revenues be subscribed to pay back the upfront $2 million. So over a period of four to five years, those funds are made whole and available for capital projects, and at the end of the 55-year term, another $2 million would come back to the city. So in essence, it's, it's really a no-cost concept for the city, other than we're not, the funds are not available for immediate construction purposes for capital improvements. the funds are not available for immediate construction purposes for capital improvements. I think this is a relatively elegant way to advance a significant number of housing units at little or no, no risk to the city. The developers are here for any questions you may have, and I'm here for any questions also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you are aware, City Manager Kern and my colleagues up here, there have been a significant amount of emails received on this. There's a few points I'd like to make, and I responded up until 5:20 today to every email that I received on this. And there seems to be, and perhaps this could have been clarified in a more detailed staff report, so we'll take it as a lesson for next time, but I think there are some simple clarifications that could have been made because there seems to be a consistent misunderstanding of this item before us. First, what is not up for discussion today, and will not be entertained during public comment, what's not up for discussion is the project itself. The project was brought through public hearing, through Planning Commission, et cetera, and was discussed, publicly heard, approved, and entitled in December of 2018 with little to no opposition. I believe there was one letter of opposition and maybe a couple of speakers during the public hearing process. So we're not here to discuss the project, whether you like the color, the size, or the location. That has been determined. Couple of points to clarify as well, and the only reason I'm bringing these up now because it was the vast majority of the content of the emails I received. The developer of this project is seeking deferrals from impact fees directly related to this project only. Correct or incorrect?
Correct.
These deferrals would be funded from Measure D funds, which by statute, by law, can only be used for affordable housing projects and programs. Is that correct?
That's correct.
None of the funds, and I appreciate the concern expressed by some of the public, none of the funds in Measure D or in the affordable housing can be used for operations or capital projects for general city business, correct?
Correct.
So it isn't, they are not general funds, funds available to the general funds. We are not giving any cash to the developer. We are actually deferring our impact fees, but those funds are being made whole out of Measure D or the Affordable Housing Fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So no check being written to the developer, and the developer's aware of that, right?
They are.
Okay. Upon conclusion of the 55 years of the loan, or if there's a transaction that occurs that results in the sale of the building, the city will receive with interest its loan back.
Correct.
Thank you very much. I believe that answers the bulk of the questions that came through. I do have some questions, which I can address in a little while as well. Other councilmembers, any questions of staff before we open this to the public or to the developer themselves?
It could be either. I as well have had some conversations about this, and I have some questions about the availability of the, any of these units for city employees. For instance, would there, would we be able to set aside three or four of these units, about 10% of them, to eligible city employees if they qualify as being low-income for purposes of, of this project? That's one question. Second question is, can we restrict the renters to people who currently reside in our zip code, let's say? Maybe not just the city of Calistoga, but let's say the zip code around? That'd be a second question. Would senior citizens qualify for, for rental, renting there? Will the units that are going to be constructed count towards a future RENA, since we, RENA allocation, since we already have met our current RENA allocation? The other questions would be, are we simply financing someone so that they can flip this to someone else and then get the benefit of the city concession? So those are the questions that I would ask.
Thank you very much. I'll take the last one, I'll let somebody else handle the other ones. On the flipping of the property, if the property were to sell, the deed restriction carries with the property, correct? City Manager?
That's correct.
So they would remain affordable housing? And if any, in such transaction, the city would receive back its funds, or its loan?
Correct.
Thank you very much. The other questions that were asked, who's, who's on deck?
I'll, I'll try and answer them. I may need to hunt to Jim.
So first, let's, let's have each, whoever's representing the developer, please introduce yourselves, tell us what your name is and what function you serve in your organization.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening for consideration. My name's Jim Rendler, I'm the Vice President for the Future Housing. We are a for-profit, affordable, primarily affordable housing developer. We also do some market rate housing. Throughout, mostly Northern California, we are a smaller company, but we've been around for quite a while. My background, I've been doing this for 15 years now. We have about 500 units in pre-construction, development. We've completed several projects, and I know Mike and Zach, and I want to thank them for the, all their efforts with this. We, we are a little unique in the fact that we're also a general contractor, so we're able to really be efficient with controlling, a lot of the risk in affordable housing projects is, the highest risk is during the construction phase, and we've had success. My partner's been a general, multifamily general contractor for 30-plus years, and so we're able to control that aspect. In terms of, we are in this, the projects long-term, every project we've built, we still own. This is not something where we build it and flip it. In fact, we have to provide financial guarantees, personal guarantees, to the tax credit investors and lenders that we are essentially cobbling all this funding from. And those are long-term financial commitments that we make, so we are absolutely on the hook for those, for these projects. And in terms of, you know, the protection with the city, some of the questions that have been, I'll jump right to those. We can absolutely do a preference. On past projects, we've done a couple of projects, City San Cruz, and that has been something that's always been a priority. We've had a lot of interaction with our attorneys and other, getting legal opinions. Unless you're in a city that is as large as, you know, like a San Francisco-type population, the advice we've gotten from every attorney has been, for fair housing, we have to go at the county level. We can't go to a city level for a preference, preference for local residents or employees, but we're happy to make that commitment. I don't want to tell you, we can explore the city, but I, I know that that's not something that ultimately we'll be able to.
Incorporate in a contract.
Correct.
Okay.
Just because of fair housing law, and there's been a lot of case laws with developers and cities getting sued for that. So in terms of accessible for disabled seniors, absolutely. There is no restrictions on that at all. What we're, what we are targeting is a, a family-style project. It's not specifically targeted towards one population, but that doesn't mean any population is excluded. So we're absolutely abid by all fair housing. We also, as we have a personal financial interest, we have a very strong incentive to make sure that we are renting to tenants that appreciate the fact that they are getting a very good benefit by being in a, this is going to be a beautiful project. I mean, the project that was entitled by the previous developer, it's a great-looking project. We intend to build a great-looking project. We want to make sure that that stays operating efficiently, because we have personal liability for that. So we make sure, we do everything we can to make sure we're putting good tenants in there. It's not something where we build it, collect our fee, and walk away. And so that, that's absolutely something I wanted to, we, we also contract with property managers. A lot of developers, they are the property manager, I'd rather have the control if they're not getting it done, to be able to fire them and bring in somebody else. We also partner with nonprofit, so our nonprofit partner provides resident services. So for this, we will have resident services on other projects. We do after-school tutoring, we might do financial literacy, health screening, it's, really, we try to cater the programs once we have a better understanding of where the needs of the tenant population that's in the property. But that is something that we would do long-term as a part of our commitment for the tax credit In terms of some of the other, this is a very unique opportunity. When, when this was brought before you back in May, there was still some uncertainty of how these disaster credits were going to essentially go out to the different counties. And so this is a really unique opportunity, that there's an additional almost $5 million, which translates to $50 million, because they're taken annually, of additional money for Napa County for affordable housing. And this is really unique, it's in this upcoming round, essentially only, it's going to be exhausted, most likely the first round. That is what is allowing us to really be able to, to request a much smaller loan. This is much smaller than you typically see on a project. We are, most projects are north of $100,000 a unit in city subsidy, and I completely understand, this is a big ask even given, especially given what's going on, but this is about as great of a kind of opportunity for us to come to a city and say, we really want to bring this project forward, and it's a, a very small compared to what we typically see, and that's because of this additional credits that is really this round. I, I did want to clarify, the 4% program is not, it's not gone. The mixed income loan program, which we had originally proposed to pair with 4% credits, that's proposed to be scrapped, given the, the current COVID, they pulled money from that Cal HFA program. It remains to be seen what happens exactly to that, but the best bang for your buck, if you will, is absolutely the 9% credits, and so we'd love the opportunity to take a shot in this round. If we're not successful, that would be our, looking at exploring other financing sources, but it would be a tough, a tough road, given the, the amount of subsidy. And I had a couple other.
Councilmember Kraus, has he hit all of your questions, between him and City Manager?
Yeah, and then a couple others came up. We.
Just a quick interruption, sorry. So, you know, you've got other funding you need, you're going after to bring, should the project not come to fruition, which we would like to see housing, there is no loss to the city, there's no funds exerted or expelled out of that account at this point?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
We, I forget what their, the technical name is, the yellow apartments here on the end of.
Calistoga Family Apartments.
Calistoga Family Apartments. We got issues down there when some people exceeded the income levels as they became more prosperous, and they got evicted. Is that same issue going to occur with your apartments?
So I'll be the first one to say it's not perfect system. It really, there are some areas where you run into situations like that. So it is a possibility. We haven't really had that problem, maybe a couple units of our portfolio, but it is a possibility. I think the, the upside is, we're providing units at kind of a range of income levels, and so the hope is, you know, that people are staying long-term, but at the same time, if they are able, where their incomes exceed, the thought is, they would be able to find other housing opportunities, we'd help somebody else who is in a worse situation. But we also, you know, I think a big part of it is not just getting it built, it's also making sure that you're dealing with issues, and you do have issues. I think the way that we have been successful is, we are absolutely committed to addressing when we do have issues. You know, we, we just selected San Cruz and RFP, that there were several applicants, it's our third project, and we had issues. You know, we had a hash oil explosion, evicted them. We're very zero tolerance with problems, and we understand that it reflects on us, so we would do everything we can to correct any situations like that.
Thank you.
You would be vetting people that would be renting to make sure that they aren't a registrant, for instance?
So we, we absolutely have a very thorough vetting process. I don't do any of that, we use a company that is, they manage over 100,000 units, and they're extremely qualified at doing that, but we are checking for, not just income, but we want to make sure there's not any type of felonies that we, you know, need to be concerned about, this type of things. We can't violate any fair housing laws, so I, I need to make sure that that is something that we're, and that's why I brought up the whole county, why it is.
Now, there's, there's a distance from certain facilities in the community in which someone is not allowed to live, and that particular area out there may be one of those areas. I don't, I don't know how far from schools that has to be, perhaps Zach knows?
Well, you, you did adhere to whatever the, the laws are, that would apply.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we have, there's so many checks and balances on these projects, because we're doing annual recertifications, we have to do, you know, we register everyone's vehicle. We, you know, it's, you have a higher level, and this is something that I've been able, sometimes going into areas where there was a lot of misconceptions. This is not kind of the old public housing model, it, it's a public-private investment. We're looking for a, a major financial investment from most likely a bank or insurance company that's going to take tax credits over 10 years in exchange for giving us a very large amount of money to build this. And so there's a lot of eyes on us to make sure that we're doing everything properly, because they risk losing that tax deduction annually, which would mean that investment was for naught.
Like I say, these are just concerns that people, you know, have mentioned to me privately, and they didn't even necessarily want to put them into an email, but, so I have a couple of questions for staff, but I think those are the questions that I would have had for the applicant.
Don't sit down yet. And we, we have, we're coming off of, which you're, I'm sure you're familiar with, two very successful housing developments, that's considered, housing that's affordable.
Absolutely.
So I, I would say the reputation of them and the attitude of the community is, is very different than probably where we were prior to those projects coming into play, and our partners on those projects have done a fairly good job with that, so I don't think we have a big concern there. Other councilmembers, questions of developer or staff?
I have a question about the, the family income levels, so for low, very low, and extremely low income levels, can you share with me or staff what, what those, I'm assuming they're family income, not individual income, but it's household income?
Right, so there's a scale, it's all published annually, it depends on the size of the household. So it's 30 to 60% AMI, and apologize, top of my head, I don't have the exact income limits.
Staff, do you have the range on these incomes?
I do. Zach provided them to me. It depends on the number of people in a household. So for example, for a one-person household, extremely low is $21,000, moderate income is $84.3, and it scales between there.
$84,000?
Correct.
So I think, and I'll let you go into the rest of them in a minute, but, because I know I was surprised, and it's, obviously it's relative to where we live, but what's considered very low, low, and moderate incomes are, in other parts of the country would be considered very good incomes.
Pretty good.
But are costly living. So if you could share and give us a family, or whatever Vice Mayor Dunstford's looking for there.
Let's say for a, a four-person household, extremely low is $30,000, moderate income is $120,000.
Well, moderate's not part of the mix. It's low, very low, and extremely low, correct?
60.
You don't have any moderate income?
No, up to 60% AMI, so that would still be considered a low, low income.
Low.
So low income is $80,000.
For the household?
For a family of four.
For a family of four.
Uh huh, and what about a, say, two persons?
For low income, 63.6.
And what's the mix of number of units in those classifications? So like, how many units in the low versus the very low? And is there any room to push more? how many units in the low versus the very low? And is there any room to push more to the low versus the extremely low?
Not really. So the unfortunate thing about the 9% credits, they provide the best leverage, but they also have very defined targets you have to hit if you want to be competitive, because you have to score maximum points. So there's a matrix, and we provided that with a couple options of affordability ranges. But the bottom line is, you have to provide a certain amount at deep targeting. They generally, you have to be kind of across the spectrum in order to score max points. If you don't score max points, you're really not even going to be competitive to submit application.
And just as a frame of reference, at $50,000 a year for a full-time employee, that's $24 an hour. So on an hourly basis, it doesn't, it sounds like a big number. But when you carry that over your full-time annual, that gets you to 50, which puts you in this category. So Ellie, continue to make mention of that, because it, I think people at home will be startled by what's considered low to very low incomes being relatively significant. Vice Mayor Dunford?
Well, I just, I mean, my, my concern is, I feel strongly that we need workforce housing, and our primary industry is hospitality. You know, we do live a little bit in a bubble here, for sure. Napa Valley, Calistoga. You know, my, I'm, my dishwashers, I own a restaurant hotel here in town, you know, they're making up well above minimum wage. I mean, minimum wage is 13. They're making 15, 50 an hour. If they're working full-time, they're making over $30,000 a year. So I have waiters that are making $65,000 to $75,000 a year. So they're not going to qualify for your project. So I'm trying to understand who's qualifying.
Yeah.
When I look at our hospitality workforce, you know, if you're on the low end of the pay scale, if you're working in the kitchen or housekeeping, you're, you're making more than, you're well over $30,000 a year.
Well, the 60% rents do go up higher, but there's absolutely, we're going to miss the incomes over that. And that's just the reality. And I, you know, when we originally started discussions, we understood that there, you know, there is a big need. I think this community has a need at every level is, is kind of what our research found. But we really, we did try to look at, and that's, that's where the original discussion was, you know, if we were going up to that higher level, what that looked like in terms of a request to the city. Because it's all about, you know, your sources and uses. We work off fixed fees. It's, it's very, here's where the gap is, is what we call it. The 4% credits with the loan program that we were looking at, it did provide an option to try to hit some of those incomes above 60, but it creates a larger gap that has to be filled through somewhere. And now with that program even gone, it's, it's even further. So we're not opposed to doing that. It's just the reality of where we're at right now from feasibility. Without the 9% credit program, I don't see how we can get there unless something changes drastically, which we don't anticipate. And we're still, you know, this project has a lot of offsites. It's not, I think there's a reason that the market rate developer, why they didn't build it as market rate from feasibility. And so when you're trying to hit that middle income is really hard to hit. That's been a big push at the state level. And I think they were making progress. And then COVID hit, and it's, it's really created some chaos. But from our perspective, it'd be a shame not to pursue these disaster credits, because this is, and this generates a tremendous amount of equity if we were successful for the project at a very low cost to the city.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lopez, or Tygo?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Why is 55 years for, I mean, the loan for 55 years?
Sure. So California's state law, the tax credit, so we apply for the federal tax credits through the state, the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. California has a 55-year restriction. So the requirement is that any of the subordinate financing would come, would be at least the term of that or longer. And so that's really where that restriction would come. And the regulatory would stay for 55 years.
Okay. And based on that, you will receive federal funds. So it will be restrictions about the applicants. Do they have to have special requirements like legal status and things like that?
So.
Because, you know, the Calistoga forever apartments, they do have to have, you know.
So with, what we're proposing is actually, currently does not include any federal home funds, CDBG. It's purely the tax credits, which are, have different requirements than some of those other funding sources that I believe they may have dealt with. It's a tough thing, because state law and federal law isn't really aligned. So we have to, I wish my property management manager was here to really answer that. But we abide by all the applicable regulations. But this project does not have a lot of the funding sources that I think are more scrutinized with some of those restrictions that don't align. If that makes sense.
Let me see if I get this correctly, Mike. We have somebody that's making, let's say, 16 bucks an hour here in town, and they work a full year. They're going to make a little over $33,000 in a year. Where does that qualify someone for as a single person? Is that, are they qualified under this?
So that would put them in the very low income category?
Okay.
So I would expect that they would qualify.
Absolutely.
So if we, if this person's spouse also had that, they'd be up to $66,500. That would be for two people.
That would bump them up to the low income category.
Okay.
Low income?
Mm-hmm.
So they would still qualify?
Very close. 63.6.
You know, considering that minimum wage is pretty soon going to be 15 bucks an hour, I don't know when that's supposed to come about. But I do recall that the state's passed legislation that increases that. But I would imagine that there's an inflationary issue that goes along with the qualification, that if the, you know, if cost of living goes up 2%, everything slugs up.
Absolutely. There's actually analysis of it on an annual basis. So there, there is supposed to be a true-up with where they take census data and really do analyze it and publish new rent limits, income limits every year.
And AMI changes annually, average median income?
Correct, average median income.
If, so I'm just trying to get clear on, I understand we need housing across the board. I'm just trying to get clear about who, you know, what, what type of employee is going to be, assuming they work here in town, are we providing housing for? Because we're basically chewing up $2 million of our housing fund over the foreseeable future, say, four or five years, when we recover it from the tax. So we don't have those funds to put elsewhere. So, you know, we have two resorts coming online. And I would guess that most of their staff is going to be making much more than $33,000 a year. So are we really, you know, solving a potential problem? That's my concern, is we're, we're not really putting resources into a specific category that is essential. It's the lifeblood of this city, which is TOT revenue. So if we can't staff our businesses, which include resorts, which will be kicking back the most sizable TOT funds, if we can't staff those resorts, those businesses, we have a problem. So are we hitting the mark?
I agree with you. And the, the issue, I think, become, there certainly is a regional need for low-income housing. But then, and we have a need here in town as well. But when you analyze the salaries and the income level of the people that need low-cost housing, in many respects, it's probably exceeds this. If you have a two-income family and each person is making 16 bucks an hour, you know, they're going to qualify under this as a low-income family, and they're going to qualify. And then if one of them gets a little bit better job, because no one around here wants to work for 16 bucks an hour even, they're, they're going to get dialed out. So your residents over there are likely to come from other areas. I'm not saying I have a problem with that. I'm just saying that here in town, we're not really solving.
That's my point.
The local problem. We're helping solve more of a regional problem.
If I could speak to that, I want to make sure that, because when you say the 30,000, 60,000, I mean, that's assuming, you know, if you do have dependents, it's a higher loan limit. The other comment, I, I would be shocked if a lot of the resorts, if their employees did not qualify. I mean, we did some research when we were looking at this, just my partners with, you know, what some of the, you know, people in different wine industry and whatnot made. And it seemed like there, there was quite a few people that would qualify. And I'd be curious, the two projects that were done, you know, where those residents are coming from as well. Because I believe there are similar restrictions. I believe at least one of those was 9% credits. I'm not sure if both of them were.
So that's just another concern I have, is we're making this decision, and I don't have that information in front of me. Like, I, I feel like I really need to know, like, who's going to qualify, who's not going to qualify, what, what type of positions, what type of worker in Calistoga is going to qualify to be able to live there? Because what we're trying to do is create housing for people that live and work here. And it's that, that really can't afford to live here. We got to solve that problem.
Hey, Zach. Have we done the, have we done the scale? I know there's, there's an income, there's an income scale out there for Calistoga, or at least for the, for Napa County?
Correct.
And have we, and what type of jobs, those are categories of jobs? Have we overlaid that to what qualifies you or disqualifies you for this particular type of project?
We haven't done that analysis. I'd have to work with the city manager to see if that's something we can do for this. I don't know how up-to-date or readily available that information is. But it is potentially something we could look at. You know, our public works team does a, an income survey every five years. That's coming up due again. We have that data available. In addition, you know, there is some data floating around out there. You know, obviously, the county does adjust, you know, based, as we talked about the, you know, with the cost of living and the median income going up every year. So it is highly contingent. You know, we could look at different workers. The problem, applying it to housing is tricky, because it's so dependent on family size. And that's a very unpredictable variable in terms of the size of the family, and then how many people in that household are actually income earners. So that, that makes it very hard to lay it on with, with, you know, exactitude.
Well, I'm sure the, the applicant is going to have a restriction on how many people they're going to allow into a one-bedroom apartment. And it probably isn't four. Great.
I mean, the, the regulations typically two plus one.
You have to speak to the mic, sorry.
Typical regulations, two plus one for the occupancy requirement.
Okay, and you had a mix of how many three-bedroom?
We were looking at about 25% three-bedroom. We have to meet certain requirements, 25% two and three bedrooms.
So that would be seven people in one apartment, then?
It's possible. It's not, I would say.
Potentially.
That, that's really not likely. But it is a possibility that.
It's not what we're seeing over at Family Apartments, going to that number.
And then, you know, we have La Padera, too, that, you know, I don't know what their average population is per apartment.
So if, go ahead.
I just want to mention, I mean, I, I understand the concern. I would like to mention, and we have a financial, you know, guarantee that we put to these investors. Investors do not invest without knowing that there are, there is a market for this. We do a market study that's in process right now, before we can even submit. We have to present that to the state, just to evidence the fact that there actually is a demand for these units. And they look at all the employment centers and look at who would qualify. So it's not that we go in the dark. I apologize that I have more specific data points to give you examples. But everything that we have, and in discussions, there are market state analysts, this is a heavily undersupplied market, and that there is a lot of people that work here that are living outside the area and commuting in. So just wanted to mention that.
So the levers, I mean, you know this, you know your business. The levers that would allow you, or allow this project to accept higher-income residents are what? So you would need a larger contribution from the city?
Much larger.
Or another, or another funding source?
Well, the, the problem is the other funding sources are all under pressure, given, even without the COVID pressure, it still creates additional gap. This is a very unique opportunity with these, the disaster credits allow to actually exceed what is a typical cap for a request that allows us to actually leverage more credit. You typically have to defer bases, credits are calculated off eligible basis of the project. Typically, you're capped where you just can't generate any additional equity. This is a one-time thing, that they have raised that, where there is, the cap is double what it typically is. So the bottom line is, it'd be much larger gap to fill somehow. And right now, there's not another source that is out there to fill it.
Okay. A few other questions, different topic, and they'll go between, because we still have time, we need time for public comment. Between the city manager and yourself, what have we done to vet this developer, city manager Kern or Zach?
So we've looked at their website. They are a very strong firm. They have developments in San Jose, Santa Cruz.
Project San Luis Obispo. We have project pre-construct, 73-ounce in Fremont, 80-units up in Elk Grove. We were just selected for a 94-unit project in Rockland, and an 85-unit project in Santa Cruz, that were RFPs competitive with seven, six or seven respondents.
Okay. Is a performance bond being requested on this project?
Yes. Yeah, we always provide performance, payment and performance.
Thank you. Will prevailing wage apply to this project?
No, it, there's nothing that we're aware of that's triggering prevailing wage on this project.
Okay. And obviously, there would be required to carry all this appropriate certificates of insurance, et cetera.
Correct.
For both contractors and subcontractors.
Yep.
Does the city have, say, any of the subcontractors?
No.
Not that we necessarily need to. Okay. All right, thank you. Yes?
So they are conditioned to construct certain improvements as well. So they would be conditioned to construct the Vine Trail from Brannan to the Motor Lodge runage. And then there's also about $800,000 worth of sewer improvements that they would construct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any other questions before I open to the public? Councilmember Kraus?
I'm just wondering what the results are if we don't build this. In other words, do we make our problem here in Calistoga even worse than, than it is? And there's a possibility that that is, that's true. I, you know, you, I have to look at both sides of a, of a question. What happens if we do, and what happens if we don't, kind of a thing. So I'm kind of wondering what happens if we, if we don't. Obviously, if we don't, we don't expend $2 million, and we don't get 78 units.
Well, we're not expending $2 million.
Well.
We're just not.
Deferring.
We're not receiving $2 million in impact. We're not receiving 2 million in impact fees that otherwise wouldn't exist.
I understand.
Yeah.
But then, if we do that, as you say, we don't have that money for another project that may better suit what we
Our housing fund will accumulate those 2 million dollars over time.
Sooner or later.
Yeah. And what's the forecast for that, Mike? Like, I, in the budget process, I saw something, it took it up to 2 and 1/2 million over maybe five?
About five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
So, we're looking at five, call it four years to get that 2 million bucks? Which, like, how, how much do we spend on the, to buy the, the land on Lower Washington for the, the project that's down there? It was like 600,000?
It was 500 per lot.
The, the one on the, the right side?
Oh, oh, uh, that was about, I wanna say 750.
It was like si- I think it was like 650.
And how many units are there roughly, like?
30.
30 units?
This is the senior project, correct?
And the total number of units of your project is?
78.
78? So, if you just think, okay, we spent 750 down here, and that turned into 30 units, we're basically gonna throw 2 million into this project to get 78, twice as much?
Two and a half times.
Yeah, two and a half times.
If I could speak to one thing too, when you mentioned this, um, how many people, I, I, I think it's important to keep in mind, that's 78 units, that those people could be living elsewhere, that frees up housing units, it is adding to supply, so, um, while those people directly may not qualify, it could free up a unit that somebody could move into.
Okay, if the council's okay, I'm gonna go to public comment. Uh, we'll start with anyone in the chambers, anyone in the chambers wishing to address this matter? Please share with us your name and your address, should you so choose, but you're not required to do so, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Charlotte Williams, 59 View Road. So, I have, um, several questions. Um, one, what's the age, what's the oldest two-story apartment complex in town? Does anyone know that? I guess, I'm, I'm guessing like, maybe 30 years?
Probably back in the 70s, I would guess.
Yeah, I'm thinking how many were here, I got here in 82, and so, I'm trying to think about that. And I just want to know if any of you have recently toured any of those apartments at about that age, the ones that were built early 80s?
Not in the last year or so, but I've been in many of them.
Okay. And so, and another question, 55-year-old apartments? Because we're looking at this 55-year return loan, loan payment, has anyone been in a 55-year-old apartment?
Well, the, the 55-year number, which also applies to the loan structure that we have, and the lease structure we have for the Boys and Girls Club, also applies to the senior apartments at the end of Washington Street, and the developer, the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, that is a, a timeline mechanism assigned to financing, it's not, you know?
Okay, I, you know, I'm just, I see that 55-year number, and I've got a clue where I'm gonna be in 55 years, but, um, I'm not sure about that apartment.
Okay.
So, just think about that money-wise. And then, um, so I understand this is paid for out of, uh, affordable housing, that that's where, and, and is that exactly the same as Measure D funds?
Yes.
That's exactly.
That's correct.
And where do those Measure D affordable housing funds come from?
That's a 1% tax on all hotels, was the additional TOT tax added to hotels.
Okay. And so, that's, it's purely funded by TOT, the affordable housing? Okay.
Well, the me- the Measure D element of affordable housing is all TOT, and then the other elements of the Affordable Housing Fund are development impact fees, if someone buys a house, they have to contribute to the affordable, builds a house, they have to contribute to affordable housing funds, yeah.
Okay.
But they are earmarked and specific for use for affordable housing programs and projects.
Okay, I'm trying to get a grip on where this money is coming from.
Which, which all ties back to workforce, like, we're in hospitality, so we invite guests to come and stay, and we have to have staff to take care of those guests, so they're paying that 1% on their TOT, which then comes back to the city fund, so that we can then invest in housing for our staff.
Right, okay, and I, and I just wanted to be clear about the Measure D, where they came from entirely, and I understand the point of that, having Measure D in this area, in this county especially. Um, and so, thinking about that, also, um, well, I guess there was a question about this subordination clause in the loan, I don't know what a subordination clause is.
Okay, we'll address that in a minute.
Okay.
You have other questions, cause you're beyond the three minutes.
Right, right, and I'm just thinking about the funding here, and so that's what I would like to understand also.
Okay.
Is what is that, and?
Thank you very much. City manager Kern, could be cause there was another question I got from someone about subor- subordination clause, please clarify.
So, typically, a governmental agency wants to be in first position on any loan documents, so if there's a foreclosure or bankruptcy, we get, if you're in first position, you get your money. In this instance, they are asking us to take second position, so that their lenders have a, a higher degree of certainty, that if there is a problem, they will get their money first. So, we're taking second position.
Which is what we also did on, you're welcome to come up, uh, which is what we also did on, um, the projects that we've, other affordable housing projects we've done?
Corporation for Better Housing.
On both of them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, sir?
That, that's absolutely standard, um, and the regulatory agreement would stay with the property, but the subordination is, um, we've never seen a project that has not had that. I also was gonna respond, if appropriate, to the comments about
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the longevity of the project, we are, I wanna mention, we, we are required to, um, uh, do ongoing replacement reserves, so we, we do have additional reserves to plan for, um, the future maintenance of the, of the project, and just from a practical sense, the, the life cycle of the projects, i- it's not that we'll build it and not touch it for 55 years, the typical cycle is, we're gonna be buying out the tax credit investor, their interest in 15 years, and at some point in the future, when the property does need additional, um, work beyond that, we would go back and syndicate new tax credits. So, that, that's a very typical scenario, and that ensures that the project does, um, stay, you know, um, in, uh, not looking like it's 55 years old, essentially.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the chambers wishing to address the public? Okay, with that said, we're, I'm assuming there's some comments from home, we all did receive emails up to, prior to 4:30, I think is our cutoff?
Um, all comments received up till 5:30 PM are provided on the website, they're printed in the back of the chamber, and they're on your iPads there as an attachment.
Okay.
It was 19 emails that were received up until 5:30 PM.
Okay. And have we received any comments after that?
I have four comments to read.
Okay, just, uh, qual- uh, at your discretion, uh, it is not necessary to repeat questions that have already been asked and answered, um, and you can go from there.
I'll try my best, I didn't fully read these while typing the minutes.
Sure.
All right, this comment was received at 5:45 PM from Kathy Marston, it says, "As a concerned citizen of over 53 years in the community, I urge city council to not allow the developer of the new apartment complex planned on Lincoln Avenue to defer payment of development fees. Thank you for considering, considering citizen input, and thank you for your support." Next comment, received at 5:45 PM from David Marston, "Please do not defer the developer impact fees." Next comment, a question about the subordination clause from Lana Richardson, I believe you've clarified that now.
Thank you.
And, last one here was received at 7:33 PM from Dean Serini. "What is the point of ultra-low affordable housing? We should be targeting incomes as Mr. Dunstford indicates, that are more reflective of what workers are being paid in Calistoga. Otherwise, we are just creating housing for the sake of creating housing, when locals won't qualify. This is a large project, and if it doesn't support the resort workers, what is the point of building this? I agree, we should not be solving a regional problem of the so-called housing crisis. I guarantee the new resorts will be paying over the pay scale required for this housing." Well, of course, there's a market for affordable housing, this would apply to any town or city across the country, this doesn't mean it is the right fit for Calistoga, based on what we need. Plus, we are already providing the most affordable housing out of all of Napa County, relative to our size. Please focus on the Eddie and Earl property before you approach this location. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right, I will close that. Um, city manager Kern, are there any other shovel-ready projects that would satisfy housing that's affordable in any, at any income level currently in front of the city?
No.
Thank you. On the Eddie and Earl project, we have, I know, interested parties, but, um, nothing planned to present to the city in the foreseeable future?
Not that I'm aware of.
Zach, can you confer?
So, yeah, the, excuse me, Zach Tussinger, planning and building director, um, there have been just some discussions with a potential developer for the Eddie and Earl site, um, any project would have to receive, or apply for, um, land use entitlements at that location, and potentially a density bonus as well, those would go to the planning commission, we have not received an entitlement application for that site at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, um, I, I, I share the concerns of Vice Mayor Dunstford, uh, and councilmember Kraus, um, and I think it's, I think we're missing an educational piece here, and that very simply is, and, and this is going to be a takeaway, because I, I'm, I'm, I am not ready to act on this item tonight. Um, the takeaway to bring back is the full scale of what very low, low, and whatever the three qualifying factors are, and let's see it in a very simple graph, single-family, two people, how many, et cetera, um, overlaid with, and, and Zach, hopefully you don't have to do too much work on this, what does that translate to that income per hour? And it's a simple division of 20/80. Um, because I think, Jim, right?
Sure.
Come on up. Um, and hopefully, you're sensing that we're supportive of housing that's affordable, absolutely, but our need is housing that's affordable for a workforce that we need to keep a thriving community, and I'm confident you've experienced this, and all, many of the other projects you've worked on.
We have, I mean, there, there's typically a need at, at every level, um, the challenge we have is, you know, how we finance that, cause we, we understand, um, that that's the priority, we just don't have a solution for how to get there without asking for an obscene amount of money from the city, which we know is not possible, um, especially given what's going on.
So, and, and I'm not suggesting, you might not be missing the mark, we just, we need to demonstrate
I, I don't think we're, I think we're actually capturing more people than, than we are giving credit to, uh, but we can absolutely put that together with the data that, and try to give you a better highlight of how many people that
Okay. Simple digestible, this is who we're hitting, because we're, we don't, we don't have that demonstrated for us here today. And the second part, I'd like you to come back with, is for us to move up to that higher-income bracket, show us the gap we'd have to fill. So, if we wanted to get to that moderate, whatever the next category up is, Mike, that you have in front of you, be candid, that's $6 million.
It's probably
But just put it, just
Yeah, yeah.
Demonstrate us, cause every, you know, your levers are few.
Yep.
Um, and your sources are few, um, so, I think if we demonstrate, if you can share with us what that looks like, then we can get more comfortable in making some sort of decision, um, but I think we need to have a, and the public needs to clearly see who, who's, who's gonna benefit from this housing. Um, while, you know, and I also agree, tying up, burdening the 2 million dollars is a concern, but I don't foresee anything else coming forward in this period of time, that's going to require 2 million dollars or less to get us to the income levels we have to hit, and we've been through this rodeo with Calistoga family apartments, we've been through this rodeo with, um, senior housing, um, at the end of, um, Washington Street. So, there are only a couple of inputs that give you the resulted output that you want. So, maybe it's an education on
I wish there was, there was another way
No.
Make our job easier.
Understood. Um, councilmembers, any further?
I, I just had
Take back our
Two comments, one is, this, this project originally was approved as a market rate project, and with little to no resistance, and at the time, I think it was approved because, uh, the market rate, the, the workforce we're trying to help, that we're in the most need of, can't afford that market rate, and we increased the density of the project, you know, two-story to three-story, I think, to help accommodate that. Um, so, you know, th- this being an affordable project, or extremely affordable project, it, to me, it kinda becomes a different project, also considering that it, it is, it is in the, a gateway, you know, an important gateway of our town, you know, it's on the main street. So, talking, or speaking to Charlotte's, um, comments, uh, if any of us have seen, you know, different apartment projects in town that have been in existence for 30-plus years, they don't look that great. So, my, my question to you is, like, what, what incentive do you have over time to keep your project looking great? Because you're right in our gateway, in our main thoroughfare, and you're gonna be surrounded by some, you know, higher-end hotel resorts.
We have a carrot and stick, so we've got the pressure from investors and lenders through the personal guarantees, but we also have the ability to have a future fee generator when we do go re-syndicate and do rehab on the property. So, um, it's in our best interest to keep the property at, operating at as high a level and put money back into it, because we're able to, um, generate additional revenue through construction and developer fees, and that's just being candid with a, you know, long-term lifecycle. I'm young enough, I'm gonna be doing this, I'm, I'm planning that 20 years, I would be redoing a, you know, rehab on the buildings that are in my portfolio, so.
Okay, um, is there, what's the time sensitivity to this? Is there one?
There absolutely is, uh, so the application's due July 1st, if, um, we miss that, then we're, you know, this, we're really kind of out of luck on, um, pursuing that, so really, uh, if council was supportive, it would have to be, um, some resolution prior to, uh, which I think you'll have one additional meeting in June, is that right?
Maybe two.
Possibly two.
So, um, yeah, I would just ask that, sooner rather than later, we can prepare that, uh, information requested very quickly.
I, I think if we're going to collect money for a special purpose like this, we're obligated to spend it on that purpose, and that is affordable housing. We're collecting impact fees, and we're collecting a special tax. Sooner or later, that's gonna come up, to 2 million dollars. So, I don't have a problem spending 2 million dollars or more to get the housing that we need, I just have to be convinced that the housing that's being built is the housing that solves the problem that we have, and I think that's exactly what the other council members have said. The other thing is, I realize your urgency, uh, hopefully you understand our concerns that we get what we need to get out of the money that we spend. The other thing that I feel is an urgency is, uh, construction costs go up not in proportion to the cost of living. I mean, I, I cannot believe how much it costs per square foot in this town to build almost anything. So, uh, by us delaying a year or two, it could be that the money that we're collecting, uh, uh, from the, uh, from the tax, uh, isn't gonna cover the increased costs that we're, that we're going, or that someone is going to incur. So, um, I, I guess that is words of encouragement from me, I see we have a problem, we have some money, uh, we've been collecting the money for a specific reason, and I don't have a problem spending that money on that kind of a expense.
So, sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna speak to the, the construction costs, that is actually one of the, the biggest, especially in this region, and with this disaster credits, especially what Sonoma County is getting a much larger, larger allocation, there's, um, gonna be a tremendous amount of construction, which is gonna further tax the ability to get con- you know, find, uh, subcontractors, and so that, that is absolutely something that we feel like we have a good handle, because we, you know, that is our kinda niche, is the background with we, that is our kind of niche, is the background with the in-grade construction, but there's not an improvement with time. If we were successful, we could be starting construction next, you know, February is what we were looking at. So I think that's a huge benefit that could, could happen.
Okay, so, anything else from council? Okay, so Jim, you're here with colleagues, or?
Yeah. So my partners, Brendan and Josh are development partners. They're more local. They actually brought us into the project and have a tremendous amount of development experience. I'm more affordable housing, but, so collectively, this, this is our team with my partner, Robert, who's not here, is the contractor.
Okay, so you guys have been listening and taking notes, so here's your chance. You're gonna be coming back. What questions do you have for us so that when you come back, this is a finished presentation and understanding what some of your time constraints are?
You know, I, I think that, really, there's not a lot of questions on my part. It's pretty straightforward. My, the only thing I would ask is just, you know, we'll present the data and the best, the best of our ability. We, it, it's impractical to think that we're gonna have data points on every single, you know, employee in the, in the city, but, you know, I, I would just ask that if we do come back and we get the information, if you wanted to move forward, that it would happen at that meeting, because otherwise, if we miss July, I, I really don't have a good solution. So I don't think I have any other questions. I think, I appreciate the candidness about where the interest is in capturing a lot of these employees, and we're gonna do what we can to provide the data.
Zach, if you can step up, please. So, staff direction, clear?
Crystal.
All right. There are some very good, there's, there's a lot of heavy lifting you do not need to do. There are some incredible resources where this data, and I've seen it, has already been pulled together from Down Valley. I, I don't think what we're asking you guys to do is excessive. It's, you're gonna layer, overlay basically two charts.
So, so we'll pull together some data that we have readily accessible, and I have a strong suspicion that they're gonna have some data that they can provide to us, too. And I think the combination thereof, hopefully, will get you the answers you need to make the decision you need to be able to make.
Perfect. And my other recommendation is, on that data, in its simplistic format, get it to these five, even well ahead if you have it, of when the agenda gets published, so that these questions, understanding the efficiency that's gonna be required in the next meeting, to make sure these are answered. And then, as soon as we, we will, as we're committing, publish our agendas, what, like, ten days out? Seven days out?
Seven, seven days.
Seven days out.
We'll do that, and we'll also try to make sure it's in a readily accessible format so that you can put it in some PowerPoint slides, so that people at home can see it as well.
Perfect. All right. Your partners, any questions? You guys, you're good? All right. We are open, we are receptive, but at the same time, we have a very specific need we would like to address. But I also feel very strongly in support of what Councilmember Kraus has said. We have by statute collected these funds for a particular purpose that we must spend it on, but we need to be cautious as to what those projects are. And thank you very much for your interest. Thank you for your time here. And with that said, I will close this item, and we will, I will entertain any council requests and ideas for discussion in the future. Sorry, can somebody?
Bring Don in.
Yep. Ask Councilmember Williams back in. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen. Have dinner in town, spend some money. Kim, how you holding up back there? Welcome back, Don. Let the record reflect the return of Councilmember Williams. All right, council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez-Ortega.
I had, all right. I just want to say that these are the times that our community has to be together more than ever. We see all the problems around our country, and, you know, I just ask for everybody to be, to be, you know, to be together, you know, not to have more division here. I know that we all have different ideas, we all have different points of view, we have different beliefs, but, you know, we are humans, and we are lived together in this community, so I just ask for, to be together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, last year before the budget process, we reviewed the goals for the city, which I thought was a good idea. I'd like us, next time, to briefly review goal number seven. That's the one on community identity. If we could look at that and review the language of that one.
Okay. Staff, you have that noted?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes. Mayor Canning, your comments at the beginning of the meeting were well-taken. I think that the United States, the world, and certainly Calistoga have some challenges ahead of us. There are always some things that kind of surface up that become a priority. Certainly, the social justice issues are one of them, and we're preoccupied right now also with the finances and COVID. I read a piece from CNN where their economists figure that it's going to be ten years before the economy fully recovers. Whether that's someone being optimistic or pessimistic, I couldn't tell you, but.
I'll hope for the latter.
Yeah. But before that recovery takes place, let me make a point here. There's gonna be another crisis, and the other crisis is global warming. And by 2030, we either have the global warm-up at 1.5 degrees centigrade or less, or it's irreversible. There are changes that are going to occur that will cause more disease, cause famine. I, I mean, you just name all the problems that we have right now. So while we're working on things that are urgencies that have come up right now, you're looking down the road about nine and a half years to a real calamity. So to that end, I think we need to be careful with how we spend our money about a number of things. I think, sort of to what Don just said, and what I've said for the last twelve, thirteen years that I've been on the council is, is we need to come up with a strategic plan. And I'm not talking about a general plan, how many houses we're gonna have built. I'm talking about how we are going to accomplish the goals that, that we have. You know, when the money comes in, we have a plan for resurfacing streets, but there are just all kinds of things that we have to be looking at on into the future besides development. So I think at some point, we need to get a strategic plan started, and it should include many facets of, of the city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing to add.
I will, regarding the situations going on throughout the country, and the peaceful forms of protest, and unfortunately, in some cases, the riots, I'll let my comments I made at the beginning of the meeting stand. Two additional points I'd like to make. Number one, please, 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 Calistoga, we are lagging behind. Complete your census, your 2020 census. It is a critical piece. It's simple to do, but it is utilized for giving us representation nationally. It's also utilized for assigning funding that we would be eligible for. So please, complete the census. And while there is quite a bit of activity in the news right now regarding some of the civil unrest, as well as the peaceful protests, which I encourage the peacefulness side of it, let us not lose sight of the fact that we are in the midst of COVID-19, and it has been reported that there are additional cases in the city of Calistoga. So you cannot lose sight of, wear your mask, wash your hands, maintain your physical distance. This is not over. It's when we relax too much that things can become problematic. And there is free testing to all Napa County residents available. It's a very simple process to apply for, register for. It is currently still being held down in Napa. I'm going to do mine tomorrow. We are trying to get an Up Valley site, but again, it's, and I believe Councilmember Kraus may have gone through it, relatively simple process.
I went through it. It made me sneeze, which did not make the person with the little Q-tip very happy, but.
I'm sure they were well-protected. So, yeah, let's not, let's not lose sight of it. And while sometimes it can be frustrating to see what's happening nationally with some situations, let's remember, keep it local, be kind locally, and the global situation starts from a whole bunch of small, local communities, so take care of one another that way. Thank you all. Have a good evening, and we will adjourn. Kendall, thank you very much.